To deliver the documents. And when I come out to get the documents from this driver, it was just readily apparent that there was nothing in the folder. I mean, it was just this empty folder that this guy was holding. And, you know, for me, that's when I realized, you know, 100% this is a scam. Time to go. And yeah, when I started to walk away, Warren just started launching and expletives at us and chases us through the mall, basically. You know, we're
Oh, my goodness.
We're fast walking to our car and he's screaming, "You need to pay me. You need to pay me." And we get to the car and, you know, he's physically holding the door open, won't let me close the door, screaming and death threats in my face at this point.
Oh.
Saying, "I'm going to send people to the airport to find you." And I ended up flying out that night.
So, you know, you're an investigative reporter. Have you ever been threatened this way? Has this kind of thing ever happened to you before?
No, it hasn't. And I think that really speaks to the nature of these scammers. I mean, like, they're so desperate and so callous and, like, he could not give up the opportunity to scam me. Like, to him, I was just a money bag. And that's how they see all of these writers that they scam, you know?
Yeah. And just briefly circling back to the broader story here, there may be a trial in this one case against this one company, Page Turner. What could it mean for the broader author scam industry? I mean, a little justice or a little drop in the ocean here?
Yeah, it's a great question. I would say the latter. There's just a limitless amount of these scam outfits. It's not just in the Philippines. There's also a lot in, you know, other predominantly English-speaking countries, Pakistan and India, to name a couple. And, yeah, it's just a drop in the bucket. I think what really needs to happen is the places where they operate need to crack down. So, Sabu needs to crack down. This is maybe the only way that you can really start to cut back on it.
Yeah. We've been talking to Brent Crane, an investigative reporter. His article is called "Our Goal Is to Get Their Money: Inside a Firm Charged with Scamming Writers for Millions," and it's in Bloomberg Business Week. Brent, thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott.
And this afternoon, in all things considered, how tire-puncturing scammers in Bogota, Colombia, are wreaking havoc on unsuspecting motorists. Colombian police are cracking down. You can hear that story on the NPR app or your local member station.
Saturdays are great. Ira Glass and his show, I love to listen to that. And then, Wait, Wait, Don't Tell Me. My name is John Ringland. I've donated two vehicles to public radio, a Ford Expedition and a Pontiac Bonneville. They were tools that we used to get around and they served a purpose. And the last thing that we could do with them that was good was give them to public radio.
For more information, go to our website, radioiq.org.
This is a test of the emergency alert system. This is
This has been a test of the emergency alert system on Radio IQ. If this had been an actual emergency, the digital bursts you heard would have been followed by official news and information.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and MathWorks, creator of MATLAB and Simulink software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And Made In, makers of cookware found in restaurants around the world, offering a carbon steel non-stick griddle for home use, designed for use indoors or outdoors, on a grill or over an open flame. More at madeincookware.com.
It's Here and Now. We all know the Earth is spinning and that one day is 24 hours long. But as NPR's Nell Greenfield Boyce reports, scientists say that today will be a tiny bit shorter than usual.
The nation's headquarters for precise timekeeping is the U.S. Naval Observatory in Washington, D.C. Outside, there's a big, black digital clock with red numbers. Inside, I met up with Dennis McCarthy. He's sort of retired now, but for years, he held the title Director of Time. He says the planet's spin gets affected by all kinds of things.
You driving here today moved your mass from someplace to here, and that changed the moments of inertia of the Earth than you could possibly have affected the rotation of the Earth.
That's an extreme example, but stuff moving around on Earth does have an effect on the speed of its rotation. You've got water melting from the polar ice caps and going into the oceans, weather systems in the atmosphere, plus the movements of the planet's liquid core.
The Earth's rotation has been variable. We've known about the rotation of the Earth being variable for about 100 years.
McCarthy says in the long term, the Earth's rotation has been slowing down because of the influence of the moon, and that's not going to change. That's been going on for millions of years.
Although the slowing down is continuing, there are departures from that general pattern.
Recently, the Earth's spin has been speeding up a tiny bit, leading to some shorter days. Earlier this month, July 9th was short by a little over a millisecond, with more short days to come in August. Nick Stamatikos is head of the Earth Orientation Department at the U.S. Naval Observatory. He says a millisecond here or there may not sound like much, but consider this: in one second, the Earth's equator rotates the length of about four football fields.
So, they're smooth and pretty fast. So, any little variations will accumulate, and it's an issue.
It matters for things like precise navigation, launching missiles, GPS. That's why researchers are constantly measuring the speed of the Earth's spin. They do it by pointing telescopes at quasars, incredibly luminous cores of distant galaxies that are so far away, they act as fixed, unmoving points in space. Now, in addition to tracking the spinning of the planet, scientists keep time in another way. They count the seconds of the day with atomic clocks. Stamatikos says atomic time is very, very accurate.
It's very repeatable and keeps going, and the Earth is the one that's a variable.
To keep atomic timekeeping in sync with the Earth's spin, the world's timekeepers have sometimes added in leap seconds. The recent spate of quick spins and short days has raised the prospect of a negative leap second, basically subtracting a second from atomic time. That's never been done before, and it's debatable whether computer systems are set up to even be able to handle that concept.
There would be some consternation, some programs that would have to be changed.
He says even regular old leap seconds can cause disruptions. That's why they've fallen out of favor in recent years, and why an international group of scientists is now debating how closely atomic time really needs to track Earth's inconsistent spinning. Nell Greenfield Boyce, NPR News.
Fans are mourning the death of actor Malcolm Jamal Warner. He died last weekend while on vacation with his family in Costa Rica. Warner played Theo Huxtable on The Cosby Show back in the 1980s and early 90s. It was must-see TV for a lot of us. Here's Warner playing Theo on the show, introducing his new girlfriend to the family.
So, Tori, this is the kitchen, and this is where I sit.
Hello, Theo.
Oh, hi, Mom. This is Tori Beckwith.
Hi.
Hello.
She'd like to take a look at your garden.
All that could be arranged.
Theo, aren't you going to introduce me?
Oh, yeah, Tori, this is my sister.
Good to know. Do you guys go to school together? No.
After The Cosby Show, Warner continued to act, to make music and write poetry. In 2015, he won a Grammy for Best Traditional R&B Performance for his work on the song "Jesus Children." Here's Here and Now host Tanya Mosley, who's now at Fresh Air, speaking to Warner in 2021 about becoming a husband and father relatively late in life.
When I hear people say, you know, when you know, you know, conceptually, that always sounded cool, you know, okay, I get it. But it wasn't until I met my wife, and I was like, that's what people are talking about.
This is the Claire and Cliff love that I've been dreaming about.
Man, like, wow, that's like, that's, that's it. And, 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 you know, once I got it, it was, there was a no-brainer. There's no, there was never any second guessing. And then I look at our daughter, and once again, I know that I could not have been as effective a husband and father, even five years earlier.
That's Malcolm Jamal Warner talking to Tanya Mosley in 2021. He died over the weekend in a swimming accident at the age of 54. And this is from that Grammy Award-winning song, "Jesus Children." Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Scott Tong in Washington, D.C.
And I'm Anthony Brooks in Boston. It's Here and Now.
All who desire to stand for a moment of silence or a personal prayer and remain standing Thank you, and amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for July the 22nd, 2025. Regular meetings are held on the 2nd and 4th Tuesday at 2:00 p.m. Public hearings are held at 6:00 p.m. on the 4th Tuesday of each month. Deviations from the schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV, Channel 3, and will be rebroadcast on Friday at 7:00 p.m. and on Sunday from 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Board of Supervisor meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokcountyva.gov. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend the Board of Supervisors meeting should contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please ask you to turn off all cell phones or place them on silent. We move to Item A, Opening Ceremonies Roll Call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. Radford?
Here.
We move to Item B, Request to Postpone, Add to, or Change the Order of Agenda Items. Fellow board members, do I have any items? No, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It has been proposed that we add as new business Item D3, Resolution of Support for Boys and Girls Clubs of Southwest Virginia Funding.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kaywood?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lubek?
No changes, sir.
All right. We move to Item C, Proclamations, Resolutions, Recognitions, and Awards. Recognition of Eric Thomas for his year of service as the Vinton Magisterial District Representative on the Board of Zoning Appeals. I recognize Supervisor Tammy Shepherd, Vinton Magisterial District.
Thank you for coming today. We want to do a recognition of Board of Zoning Appeals member Eric Thomas. Eric has served at Board of Zoning Appeals for 25 years and has been a true asset to the county. His professional life as a realtor has given him a unique ability to review requests from the citizens for consideration of variances to their properties. He has always been involved and paid close attention to the presentation of cases for and against variance. He did not always side with the citizen's request, and he did not always side with the county's standard zoning regulations. Eric is a man with a sense of humor, but also of sincere spiritual faith, who walks the walk and talks the talk. He has also been one of the premier softball coaches in the Roanoke Valley and had tremendous success with teams from the Williamburg area. The planning staff speaks very highly of Eric and appreciates his contributions and service. And we want to thank you for all the time, effort, and service that you have put into this. And I want to invite, if there's members of the Planning Commission that want to come speak and Zoning Department, I wanted to invite them to come up. Thank you. May I give a greeting to you?
God bless you.
I bless you. All the service.
I'd like to acknowledge Eric Thomas's years of service to the county. Becky and I, of course, worked in the Planning Department and with the Department of Zoning, specifically the Board of Zoning Appeals. The only complaint that I've ever heard from Eric related to work on the Board of Zoning Appeals had something to do with the driver of the van that would take the bus out. I think that was unwarranted. I won't go into any more detail, but he's been a tremendous asset to the community and to Roanoke County Government.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say that the staff we had couldn't be beat, and we were not just on board. We all were friends and helped each other and tried to make the right decisions. And I did pray when we'd go out in that van, and we got back, I'd pray too. Thank you, guys. God bless you.
Kind of words. Okay, yeah, before y'all take off, do I have any board members want to wish to comment?
I'd like
Yeah, we'll start off with Ms. Hooker, if that's all right?
Just a real quick comment. I've spent some time in that van and years prior, and it'll make you a spiritual man, won't it? We sincerely appreciate your years of service, what great longevity, and I think that that really helps in providing good decisions for our citizens. So, we truly appreciate your work and your efforts. It sounds like you're multi-talented with coaching and doing this, so your spare time is full, and we appreciate your years of service. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eric, haven't seen you in a while, and good to see you. You're looking as good as you did the last time I saw you. You know, you come from a great family. Your father was a great patriot and a great representative in General Assembly, and he worked hard for the people, and he was thorough and did his homework, and you have those qualities and then some. And your son, as well, used to umpire our coach pitch games and enjoyed working with you all the years. So, I'm not surprised that you have been recognized today for your service to Roanoke County in another way. And I just want you to say that watch out, because if Tammy taps you on the shoulder again, she may want you to volunteer for something else. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, on behalf of the citizens of Roanoke County, I want to say thank you for your 25 years of service on the Board of Zoning Appeals. That is fantastic. Your knowledge, your background, your experience has been a credit, has been a credit to this community. I know you've had some rough patches in your life, but despite that, you've continued to, I think, be a perfect example of what a citizen is in our community and in our republic. And people like you make us great. And so, again, thank you.
Thank you.
And let me close with comments. I did go before the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Did they turn you down?
And you accepted it. So, check mark on that when you're going to go away today with good comments. Now, I recognize one of your compadres in the back there, Mr. Jones, Jack Jones. I guess you have other board members back there?
Jags here, Jeff.
You guys mind standing, just so we can see the rest of you?
Jack James, Jeff Armstrong.
Yeah. Now, I don't need any of you guys, especially you, Jack, wanting to resign or retire, okay? None of that stuff, okay? But, Mr. Thomas, I don't know you as well as I know the other guys, but, you know, thank you for your years of service. It is, it can be tough, and it can be slow at times, too. I know we went through a period there where we didn't have a whole lot going on, but, you know, just thankful for you, thankful for your professionalism and looking at everything objectively, and giving me a thumbs up on my zoning appeals.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
It's an honor.
Yeah. I invite Richard, come on up. Let's get some pictures up here in the front with, and anybody else up here?
I should get Jack.
Get the other one.
Yeah. Hey, Jack, you guys come on up here. Let's get a picture with Mr. Thomas and the staff. Come on up here.
Do we want to stand behind him?
Right here, Eric, right here in the middle.
You're the center of attention, right here.
Yeah, that's right.
You too.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
How are you doing? Good to see you.
I haven't seen Jack in a long time.
See, Bill, see if you can turn. Turn.
Don't move.
He was going to turn.
There we go. One, two, three.
Thanks. Good job, Eric.
Yeah, thank you. That's fine. Family, the ones that just walked down. The family, they just walked down. Yeah, just go over there. Come on back, family.
Big smiles.
Hey, thank you, Allison. Okay, we now move to Item C2, Resolution Recognizing Dylan Crowder for His Exemplary Service and Courageous Action, Richard Kaywood County Administrator.
Afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So, I think I've said a number of times over the years, this is one of my most favorite things that I do, which is our somewhat informal and employee-of-the-quarter-ish-type recognition. And this represents a first in a couple of different ways for me. First, this is the first employee that I have recognized that I knew I wanted to recognize him before we ever had a chance to meet in person. And he's also the first part-time person that we've recognized in this way. But he has something like super cool that I think really showed a lot of initiative and saved us a lot of money. So, back on July 8th, he was operating a floor cleaning machine at Green Ridge, serving in his capacity as one of our custodians there, and he noticed that there was a fire down by the indoor pool. And I'd have been thrilled if he had called 911 quickly, but he went way beyond that. So, he noticed the fire, went down to the pool area, was looking for a container, because there's pool water nearby, so he dumps the lost and found, gets water in there, puts out the fire before the sprinkler ever went off. And as any of you know, if a sprinkler goes off in a building, you, A, have a massive cleanup, B, you've almost certainly done damage to the facility that'll have to be repaired. Well, he avoided all of that by taking quick action, and by the time the fire department got there, fire was out, and they said they'd have done the same thing that he did. So, I just thought that was like the coolest thing, and it's really been my privilege to bring Dylan before you today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kaywood. And we have a resolution to read. Clerk, will you please read that?
Resolution Recognizing Dylan Crowder for His Exemplary Service and Courageous Action. Whereas Dylan Crowder has served the citizens of Roanoke County as a staff member at the Green Ridge Recreation Center and Splash Valley Water Park for the past four years, with the last two years as custodial coordinator. And whereas on the evening of July 8th, 2025, while performing his custodial duties and auto scrubbing the indoor track at Green Ridge, Dylan observed a fire breaking out in the indoor pool area. And whereas Dylan responded immediately and without hesitation, running to the scene and successfully extinguishing the fire using quick thinking and available resources, including a lost and found bin and water from the pool. And whereas Dylan's coworker assisted in contacting the fire department who promptly, who arrived promptly to inspect the situation. And whereas the responding firefighters commended Dylan for his swift and effective actions. And whereas Dylan's calm demeanor, prompt decision-making, and dedication to safety potentially prevented injury and further damage to the facility and demonstrated a clear commitment to the well-being of staff, patrons, and Roanoke County property. Now, therefore, being resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County does hereby recognize and express its sincere appreciation to Dylan Crowder for his outstanding service, courageous action, and devotion to duty. And further, the Board of Supervisor commends Dylan for his professionalism and extends its gratitude for his exemplary conduct in a moment of crisis.
Thank you, Clerk. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
Set, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. Board members, anybody like, wish to comment? Yes, Ms. Hooker.
Just a real quick comment to say how much we really, truly appreciate your quick action, and the part that I really liked, too, is that it's just a calm demeanor about the whole thing. We really appreciate you being there at that exact time to save us a lot of time and money, and we just really appreciate your actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Anybody else? I want to ask Alan, I see him back there hiding. What are you doing, starting fires in the pool now? Dylan, I'm glad you were there. Was that after hours?
It was.
Okay, all righty. You ever tell Dylan that I helped build that thing? Okay. Dylan, we're great, your quick thinking, I mean, you're just a regular dude. You see something going on, you react. I mean, that's, that's, a lot of people won't do that, but thankful you were there at the time, and you saved, you know, a valuable piece of property from being damaged. So, thank you very much, Richard, for bringing that forward. If you guys don't mind, come up here to the front, we'll get a picture. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
Set, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. Board members, anybody like, wish to comment? Yes, Ms. Hooker.
Just a real quick comment to say how much we really truly appreciate your quick action and, and the part that I really liked, too, is that it's just a calm demeanor about the whole thing. We, we really appreciate you being there at that exact time to save us a lot of time and money, and we just really appreciate your actions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else? I wanna ask Alan, I see him back there hiding. What are you doing, starting fires in the pool now? Dylan, I'm glad you were there. Was that after hours?
It was.
Okay, alrighty. You ever tell Dylan that I helped build that thing? Okay. Dylan, we're great, your, your quick thinking, I mean, you're just a regular dude, you see something going on, you react. I mean, that's, that's, a lot of people won't do that, but thankful you were there at the time. And you saved, you know, a valuable piece of property from being damaged. So, thank you very much, Richard, for bringing that forward. If you guys don't mind, come up here to the front, we'll get a picture.
Should we stand up again? Okay. Big smiles, one, two, three. Okay, thank you.
Hey, thanks, Dylan. No complaints, Dylan. We now move to item D1, New Business, Resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Roanoke, Virginia, declaring its intention to reimburse itself from the proceeds of a financing for costs associated with construction and on renovations for the Hollins Library, the Hollins Fire Station, Extension of Sewer Services, Phase 2 of Infrastructure at Explorer Park, and roadway infrastructure. Larry Gerhart, Director of Finance, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. Again, the county is currently in the early stages of development for several renovation and construction projects for the Hollins Library, the Hollins Fire Station, Extension of Sewer Services, Infrastructure at Explorer Park, roadway infrastructure, and Parks Restroom Facilities. These projects are outlined in our adopted fiscal year 26, fiscal year 35 Capital Improvement Program. We are currently working on finalizing our application to secure the bond funding for these projects. As part of this project, regulations allow the county to reimburse itself for funds currently being spent from bond proceeds that we will receive at a later date if the county declares its intention to do so before the funds are actually spent. The resolution before you will allow the county to include expenditures that could potentially be made on these projects from the future bond proceeds. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the motion.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir. Ms. Gerhart, in our resolution, we're anticipating borrowing about $21 million, and we're hoping to use the Virginia Resources Authority, whether it's fall this year or spring next. And I know we can't, you can't predict what interest rates would be. I read in the Roanoke Times that Roanoke City just issued some debt through a local bank, and I think they were 3.9 to 5%, something like that. Are you hoping that the VRA interest rates will be less than that?
I'm hoping that they will be about the same. So we do have a little bit of an application fee that the VRA will charge us, but we're, at the moment, it's looking like that interest rate would be around 4%. But better than the 6% that we use in our model.
Okay. Thank you.
And just as a reminder, the reason why we're doing 21 million, our bond structure is, is that we're really technically at the 17 million, but when we did our 22 bond issuance, we only issued the 13 million, so we had 4 million left over, which we're adding to the 17 that we have for the current year to come up with our 21. So our structure allows us to, to do that, so.
Okay. Any further discussion here or none? Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. Ms. Shepherd had to step, step out for a moment. She'll be right back.
Thank you.
We move to item 2, Resolution Adopting Legislative Priorities for the 2026 session of the Virginia General Assembly and Petitioning the General Assembly to Favorably Consider the Priorities Addressed Herein. Welcome, Mr. Pu, Mr. Lubick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. Each year, the Board of Supervisors adopts a resolution setting forth legislative priorities for the upcoming session of the General Assembly. This is to provide direction to staff, its legislative liaison, and also to members of our local delegation. This year, the Board has identified six priorities of local and statewide concern to be considered during the 2026 General Session of the Virginia General Assembly. In the Board's packet, five of the priorities were included on the resolution. But after further discussion over the weekend and at the Board's request, a sixth has been added. Copies of the resolution have been distributed to each member of the Board. And while for the information and benefit of Roanoke County's citizens, read the resolution in its entirety. So this is a resolution adopting legislative priorities for the 2026 Session of the Virginia General Assembly and petitioning the General Assembly to favorably consider the priorities addressed herein. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County, Virginia, has identified legislative priorities of local and statewide concern to be considered during the 2026 Session of the Virginia General Assembly. And whereas the Board adopts this resolution, setting forth its priorities and respectfully petitions the General Assembly to favorably consider such. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County, Virginia, that the following six priorities are submitted for the General Assembly's consideration during its 2026 Session. One, Adjusting Statutory Notices of Effective Tax Rate Increases to Account for Inflation. The county urges the General Assembly to amend Sections 58.1-3321 and 58.1-3330 of the Code of Virginia to take inflation into account when publishing and sending notices of effective tax rate increases to real property assessments. A locality's communications to its citizens regarding the effective tax rate increases will more accurately convey the information intended if they are inflation neutral. Number two, Airport Expansion and Funding. The county supports funding to assist and support runway, airfield safety improvements, and terminal capacity improvements at the Roanoke-Blacksburg Regional Airport. The county further supports increasing funding to the Commonwealth Aviation Fund to ensure that all Virginia commercial service airports can make improvements. Number three, Oppose Collective Bargaining. The county urges the General Assembly to oppose any effort to mandate collective bargaining for local government employees. Number four, the Children's Services Act. The county supports enhancing the ability of local school divisions to serve childrens with disabilities, to include flexibility in the use of state pool funds, to serve children with high-level needs, and local or regional programs tailored to meet those needs at a local option. Further, the county supports continued investment of state resources to assist and local administration of CSA programs. Number five, Mental Health and Public Hospital Needs. The county urges the General Assembly to use available funds to continue the operation and expansion of Catawba Hospital. And number six, the county urges the General Assembly to use available state and federal funding to improve access to and affordability of broadband to promote the goal of statewide coverage. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lubick. Any questions for Mr. Lubick on the, okay, I'm hearing none. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I move the motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, first, second motion. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'd like to make a few points.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Peter, thank you for those last-minute changes. Mr. Mahoney and I both feel strong, and it's because the rest of the Board, about including some soft language on the airport. We did not include the cost because the cost is to be determined. And maybe by November, our good friends at the Regional Chamber and at the airport will have those numbers. And then we can insert that number in there. One good thing about this agenda is that in item 1, Delegate McNamara has agreed to carry that bill and legislation in next year's General Assembly. And that, that's why it's number one on our agenda this year, and appreciate all your efforts in presenting a nice bill for him, just to put in his folder and just copy and paste it into the bill next year. That, that saves them a lot of work over there, and I know they appreciate it as well. The other things are kind of, you know, general issues that have been on there before in the past, and maybe some better definition might come out of these as we discuss with our legislators. So today, it's the official adoption, tomorrow, it could change between now and next January. And we appreciate all your work on this, as well as those nice colorful cards you present to us so we can fold them up and give them to our friends in Richmond when we go there in January. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any further discussion? I wanna know who's gonna arm wrestle the General Assembly on the percentage of inflation that they'll use.
Delegate McNamara's already been presented with the measure.
Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Lubick. We move to item 3, Resolution of Support for Boys and Girls Club of Southwest Virginia Funding. Mr. Lubick?
Yes, sir. This matter was first brought to the Board's attention when it was discovered that a federal government's funding freeze was eminently expected to affect the operation of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Southwest Virginia. Over the past weekend, however, the funds were released, and the Boys and Girls Clubs received the anticipated and necessary funding through a federal grant program entitled the 21st Century Community Learning Centers Program. It was proposed by Ms. Shepherd that the Board today adopt a resolution supporting this funding of the Boys and Girls Clubs. The Boys and Girls Clubs of Southwest Virginia report that in 2024, they served 840 youth with after-school care, summer camp, and outreach programs, and that 640 of these youth benefited from the 21st Century Community Learning Centers Program funding. The Boys and Girls Clubs has explained that, that most, the most a family will pay for a child to be enrolled in one of their after-school programs is a $15 annual membership fee and $15 per week. They emphasize that with the federal grant funding, no families are turned away for inability to pay. The Boys and Girls Clubs of Southwest Virginia, in addition to serving in seven other locations in Southwest Virginia, currently serves children at two locations in Roanoke County. The first is at Burlington Elementary School in the Hollins Magisterial District, and the second is at the Vinton Baptist Church, which location serves children from W.E. Kundif and Herman L. Horn Elementary Schools. A resolution has been prepared and shared with each member of the Board in which the Board, one, expresses its support for the continued funding of the 21st Century Community Learning Centers Program, and, two, expresses its enthusiastic support for the Boys and Girls Clubs of Southwest Virginia, their mission to build great futures for local youth, and their service to the children and families of Roanoke County.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lubick. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes.
I'd like to take a moment to recognize the invaluable role of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Southwest Virginia, the role they play in supporting the young people and their families in our community. They provide safe, affordable, and enriching programs, including summer camps, after-school care, and tutoring while they're there, that help children learn, grow, and thrive. I am thrilled that the essential federal funding that makes these programs accessible has now been released over the past several days. Without this funding, the opportunities to support our families would have been at risk. With this resolution, our Board is formally expressing its strong support for the continuation of that funding and for the club's mission to help all youth reach their full potential.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I just wanna say a few words about this. I think it was the right thing to do, and it was in motion, and then all of a sudden, Saturday morning, we read that the, the money's gonna start flowing, but it probably hadn't been received yet, because nothing ever moves too quickly from the government, but we do appreciate it being reinstated. To Mr. Mahoney's credit, asking more questions, we would've discovered Burlington had a program there in the Hollins District, so I encourage this solid statement of support even after the government approved it. Thank you, Mr. Lubick. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Will the Clerk, please call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. We move to item E, First Reading of Ordinances, number one, ordinance, accepting funds in the amount of $510,060.48 from the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation, and appropriating such funds to the county's grant fund for the operation of the CoreTran program, and, two, reallocating $21,252.52 from the CoreTran budget and the operating fund to the grant fund for the required match for operation of the CoreTran program. Paula Binckton, Transit Planner, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chairman Radford, members of the Board. I come before you this afternoon with an ordinance to accept and appropriate $510,060.48 of grant funding from the Department of Rail and Public Transportation to be, to be used to offset the monthly cost of the CoreTran program, and with it to reallocate $21,252.52 from the CoreTran budget that is already in the operating fund to offset the, or to afford for the required local match. As you all know, the CoreTran program has been providing transportation to our citizens who are age 65 or better, or who have had a disability since 1985. And I can honestly say, over the years since I've been involved with the program, it seems to be one of the essential services that I hear the most about from our folks that say it's still the best-kept secret. This is the fifth application we have submitted to the Department of Rail and Public Transportation for Section 5310 funding to offset the cost of the program. To date, we have been awarded over those applications over $2.2 million. And this go-around, we were awarded $127,872 in rural capital funding and $382,188.48 in urban capital funding, to total the $510,060.48, of course, which is 80% federal, excuse me, 16% state funding, and then our local match of 4% at the $21,252.52. This grant will take effect October 1 of this year and will run through September 30 of 2026, and I will be submitting the reimbursement on a monthly basis, depending on what our invoices, invoices are from our vendor. The current available match is in the CoreTran budget for 2026, and staff recommends approval of the first reading of the ordinance and requests scheduling of the second reading for August 19, 2025.
Thank you, Paula. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance and to schedule the second reading for August 19, 2025?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to answer your question. Paula, I couldn't quite hear you. This is all state money and no federal money, or is it federal to state?
No, it's federal and state money.
Okay, so we need to recognize that in the next few months, perhaps maybe more than a few months, they're supposed to be coming up with a new five-year transportation budget in Congress, and I certainly hope this doesn't come under the radar and someone gets some brilliant idea that they wanna take the money away, because if they do, and you, we hear about that, Mr. Lubick, we need to rally some resolution to not do that, because this has been going on for how many years now? Ten? Five?
That we've received funding from DIP?
Yes.
This is our fifth.
Fifth year. That's, that's excellent, because we can't always say we get money from smart scale, because we didn't get any this last round, so I hope they leave this one alone and don't even think twice about it, but thank you.
So far, we've been lucky.
Yeah. Mr. Mahoney?
Ms. Binckey, since you took over this program, you would've been fantastic. And in our report, you see the dollars that she and the folks she works with in the county have been able to secure. So I just think, you're a godsend, you've been doing great things for Roanoke County and the citizens who use this service. And that's true, not only for this item, but the very next item that we're gonna vote on.
Right.
So I just wanna recognize you and thank you for everything you've been doing. The, the results are, I think the results are amazing.
Just one quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
So as you were rattling off all the numbers and, you know, the 2.2 million total over five years, and you say that the $21,000 is coming from existing funding, that the county has in operational funds, but are there any other funds that routinely go into the CoreTran budget? Just the state, the federal, and then this 4%, but no other need ongoing? I mean, that's really spectacular.
That's right.
That is, that is awesome, and, and I echo Mr. Mahoney's commentary. You have done fabulous things here, and especially when I talk to my citizens who live, some of them far away from the central location of doctors and appointments that they may be making, it really has been a godsend, so we're... be making, it really has been a godsend, so we're very appreciative of your good work on this. Thank you.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker.
Yes.
Mr. North.
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Radford.
Yes. We move to item two, ordinance. Item one, accepting funds in the amount of $126,400 for the Virginia, from the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation, and appropriating such funds to the county's grant fund for fiscal years 2025 and 2026 for operation of the McAfee Knob Trailhead Shuttle Service to the National Park Service McAfee Knob Trailhead, and, two, reallocating $31,600 from the CoreTran budget to the operating fund, to the grant fund for the required match. More good news.
Hello again, members of the board. Chairman, I come before you with an ordinance to accept and appropriate the $126,400 of grant funding from the Department of Rail and Public Transportation to be used to offset the monthly cost for the McAfee Knob Trailhead Shuttle and to reallocate the $31,600 from the CoreTran budget in the operating fund for the required match for fiscal years 2026 and 2027. This March marked the actual fourth season that the shuttle was in operation, and if you recall, the original reason for the shuttle was to help offset some of the parking congestion that was at the McAfee Knob Trailhead that we were seeing since 2020 just grow and become more and more of a headache for the county and for citizens and for our visitors. So I think overall, the shuttle has been a success. We receive continued feedback that folks like the shuttle, it's easy to schedule, they can find it. To date, we have the six shuttle locations, including the two that we have in the city of Salem, as well as Dragon's Tooth. I would say that since the launch of the service, we have had roughly, I believe, just over 9,000 reservations for folks who have been actually participating. We have seen a slight decline from last year. Of course, last year, 2024, the parking lot at McAfee was closed due to the construction of the pedestrian bridge, but shuttle service is, we are seeing month-to-month in 2025, still exceeding those numbers from 2023. I don't really look at last year as being what the norm was, since folks didn't really have the opportunity to park at the Trailhead. Roanoke County has received prior grant funding totaling $268,629 from the Department of Rail and Public Transportation. On the recommendation of DRPT staff, Roanoke County staff did apply for another round of Demonstration Project Assistance Grant Funding, and we were awarded the $158,000 for the McAfee Knob Trailhead Shuttle Service with $126,400 in state funds, and then the local match of $31,600. I think it's important to point out there, and maybe, Mr. North, you can appreciate this, a lot of our grant funding from year to year is always touch and go, we're not promised that, and that was something through talking with DRPT staff, they encouraged, normally you only get two rounds of demonstration grant funding, and so they said that they would make us whole and offer us that third year, so that's how we got to where we are today.
That's great.
So going forward, we have, in the CoreTran fiscal year 2026 budget, so aside the dollars for that local match of $31,600, staff recommends approval of the first reading of the ordinance and requests the scheduling of the second for August 19.
Okay, she just stated the motion. Do I have a motion to approve the first reading?
I move to approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
I guess, listening to Ms. Benke, this may be at risk.
I.
I mean, the next year, and it's great, we got the third year of a demonstration grant, but that is a little of a concern. We're going to have to maybe think of developing a replacement if we don't get another year. And I understand the point, that the demonstration grant is supposed to be a very limited kind of approach. That'll be problematical, because you look at the numbers, and a lot of people are using it, even with the construction of the new facility up at McAfee, we'll have, we may have a headache on our hands in a year or two.
Chairman, if I might.
Yes.
Yes, we might, but I think what we need to do is not wait for the clouds to come and the rain to start. We need to reach out to Senator Kane's office, because he was a great proponent of McAfee's knob. He hikes it. He was a big supporter, I think, of the bridge that went over there. I think the National Park Service and the federal government contributed money for that, so, you know, a soft conversation with his local office here about, is there any federal money to cover this as well, might come at a time when they're getting ready to put together transportation, five-year transportation bill, maybe they could put something like that in there. So we have an ally for that part of the county, and I think it might be good to go ahead and hope and pray that DRPT maybe extends it, but in the meantime, I'd play the federal side with Senator Kane's office.
Yeah. Ms. Hooker.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I want to say that our staff has been phenomenal with advocating for this and for the potential for the expansion of the parking lot. I would say, though, that even once, speaking positively, that that has expanded, that there still may be a clear need for this ongoing, especially with 9,000 reservations. I mean, those are incredible numbers, so the need, the desire is real for our citizens to have this convenience. So to your point, Mr. North, we do need to make sure that all of us are advocating appropriately to make sure that this can continue for as long as possible.
Exactly.
And I think just some other side notes. I know many of you are aware, we applied for the congressionally directed spending to help expand the actual parking situation that is on the side of a mountain as a trailhead, and, you know, we're still waiting to hear what the outcome of that is, and Senator Kane and Warner were very supportive of that application and got us to the point to where we are now. So we just need to, I guess, hope and cross our fingers that that actually does come to fruition, but staff have been exploring some other options with the National Park Service as to what are some other revenue streams that we can also look at with the shuttle that we haven't explored to date, so.
How many additional spaces would that provide?
For the new parking, if we were to get the expand, it would be 102, where it's currently registered at around 65, depending on who you ask on any given day.
Right. But I think we've eliminated the cars being parked on the road, mostly.
I don't think it's completely eliminated, but it's better.
Well, and I think when we, when we worked with VDOT, and they were able to actually sign Old Catawba Road, which is where we were seeing the challenge, and we could actually sign where people could park legally and safely, and when I've been in contact on a monthly basis with the Roanoke PD, they have not seen the amount of ticketing and towing that we were at all. So, and also part of that expansion that we talked about with the CDS application, we did allow for a permanent shuttle stop, so that is something we did take into account for future growth.
Excellent.
Well, I'll just say this, I know if there's money to be found, you're going to find it, and if you need help, I know you're going to ask for it, and that's where Mr. Lubek comes in. Thank you.
Okay. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker.
Yes.
Mr. North.
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Radford.
Yes. Thank you. We move to item three, ordinance authorizing acquisition of real property containing approximately five acres located at zero, Mount Chestnut Road, Roanoke, Virginia, Roanoke County tax Rachel Lauer, welcome. Tell us more about it.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm here presenting this ordinance to you on behalf of our Parks and Rec Department. As you know, Roanoke County maintains Happy Hollow Gardens, which is a multi-acre park located in Roanoke County known for its azaleas. The park includes an amphitheater, a grill, minimal parking, picnic shelters, picnic tables, and dirt trails through a dense wooded area. Adjacent to Happy Hollows is a five-acre undeveloped lot owned by Better Land Company, LLC. Better Land Company, LLC, has offered to sell the five-acre lot to Roanoke County to be added to Happy Hollow Gardens for a purchase price of $45,000. Purchase of the five-acre parcel would preserve the land with no development and would allow it to be, again, added to Happy Hollow Gardens. I have structured a draft purchase agreement and a draft deed, which is included in your materials. The purchase agreement would be contingent upon an environmental assessment on the property, as well as a title examination, both of which would need to show no incomparances or environmental defects that are on the property before the county would follow through on the purchase of the property. The cost to accomplish the acquisition would be the $45,000 purchase price, the cost of a title examination, the environmental assessment, and the closing costs. The total cost of the acquisition will be funded by fee class funds from the Parks and Recreation Department. So at this point, staff does recommend approval of the ordinance and scheduling this for a second reading at your August 19 meeting.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the first reading?
There's a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker.
Yes.
Mr. North.
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Radford.
Yes. Thank you. We move to item F, second reading of ordinance and public hearing. Item one, ordinance amending articles one, two, three, four, and five of the Roanoke County zoning ordinance. Philip Thompson, Director of Planning, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kind of went over this, I'll kind of quickly highlight some of the amendments that we're proposing, or the planning committees are proposing, so let's look it over. As you mentioned, there are amendments to all five articles of the zoning ordinance. I think as many of you are aware, you know, we work with the Planning Commission on a continuous basis, reviewing our zoning ordinance, since it is 33 years old, and it's part of their work plan, and so we work on it usually about every six months. We bring you a packet of amendments that we are proposing. These amendments generally correct inconsistency or clarify issues or standards. We either add or amend definitions or uses, add or amend uses within certain zoning districts, develop or amend standards for existing or new uses, and create revised development standards, dealing with a host of issues. So for Article One, the one proposal is, you know, we don't keep a hard copy of our zoning warrants anymore, it's a digital copy on Unicode, and our GIS, our zoning maps are on the GIS system. So the first one to amend Section 30-1 is that the ordinance and official zoning map may be kept in either a hard copy or digital form. For Article Two, definitions, we are adding definitions, mainly dealing with wireless communication facilities, so above-ground level balloon test, co-locate micro wireless facility, and small cell facility, we're adding, we're amending definitions for antenna and temporary portable storage containers. Then in the use types, we're amending broadcasting tower definition, and we're adding a new one for wireless communication facility, and then having three different classes, one up to 80 feet, Class Two would be from 81 to 120 feet above ground level, and then Class Three would be above 120 feet to 199. For Article Three, this is where we add primarily wireless communication facilities and the different classes to the different zoning districts. So currently, cell towers require a special use permit in the ag districts, the commercial districts, and the industrial districts. There's nothing that's allowed by right. So with this and having the different classes, for the ag district, we're allowing it up to 120 by right, and then if you want to go above 120, it'd be a special use permit. In R1, R2, it would be a special use permit for up to 80 feet or up to 120. At R3 and R4, we would allow it up to 80 feet, but it'd be a special use up to 120. For the commercial districts, it'd be by right up to 80 feet as well, and then again, above that would be a special use permit up to 120 feet, and then, and even go up to 199 feet in C1, C2. In our industrial districts, it's by right to 120, and then a special use permit for above that, and then for the explorer park district, again, we allow it up to 120 feet, and then if it's above that, you'd get a special use permit up to 199 feet. For Article Four, for use and design standards, we do amend standards for accessory apartment, mini warehouse, broadcasting tower, and temporary portable storage containers, and then add new standards for wireless communication facilities. For accessory apartment, what we're doing is adding the industry use types that are defined in our ordinance, where you could do a accessory apartment in property of zone C1 and C2. Again, using our ordinance, we came across a situation that brought this to light, and so we thought that made sense. For mini warehouses, we're striking a standard, since we already have the buffers in place between zoning districts, we don't think that there needs to be this requirement that no door opening for any public cubicle can be constructed facing residential zone property, so we're striking that from the ordinance. For broadcasting tower, we are kind of rearranging some of the sections in that, in those use and design standards, updating information and adding the application requirements. Again, we're removing propagation maps, because that's part of the state law, that we can no longer require that for broadcasting towers. For wireless communication facilities, we add a section on small cell facilities, and where they're allowed by right, and then general standards for height, facility setbacks, building structure setbacks, number of towers, lighting, FAA review, zoning overlay districts, co-location, design, removal, finish, and signs, and then have a section on application requirements. For accessory uses and structures, this deals with temporary portable storage containers, again, changing a show to a may, whether it has signage on the side, and then deleting a section regarding placing them in VDOT right-of-way. We don't enforce that, VDOT would enforce that, so we're just striking that from the ordinance. And lastly, solar energy systems, this deals with ground-mounted or pole-mounted solar energy systems for single-family homes or residential properties as an accessory use. And so we're just making a range. Currently, it was only 1,000 feet was the maximum, no matter how large your lot was, and so we're just adding a range of options, so one acre or less, you could have up to 1,000 square feet. From one acre to five acres, you could have up to 1,500 square feet, and over five acres, you could have 2,000 square feet. So, planning committees held a public hearing beginning of this month, July 1. They had no citizens speak. They had a general discussion of all the proposed amendments, but they did recommend approval of the proposed amendments as you have them for you. With that, take any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Thompson?
Oh, not here.
Okay. I have one. I actually had a citizen text me, or send me an email about an hour ago about, got a part of an HOA that doesn't prohibit solar panels, but the citizen wants to put them on a platform and not on the roof. Does this cover that?
Yes. That's, so yeah, if they are having as an accessory, we treat that as an accessory structure, there's a height requirement of 15 feet. Again, they have to meet, so a panel array not on your house would be considered an accessory structure, so for each zoning district, there is a lot coverage for all impervious surfaces and structures, but then there also is a building lot coverage, or building coverage for accessory structure. So, again, you have to understand what's on site, but that's, I believe, 7% in the residential districts, which is pretty small. And so, again, it depends if they have a accessory structure, no, but yeah, this would cover that, or this would be under that.
So the advice to the HOA is the citizen, the homeowner, needs to apply through.
Yeah, they could get a bill of permit and submit, and we would review it from a zoning standpoint. And what I would say is, what we intended, I think when we first did these regulations back a while ago, it was thought that if they were in a residential area, 1,000 square feet would be that size, and if in most HOAs, I'd take it, the one acre or less it's going to be, so it's not really, if it's one acre or less, it's not really changing the standard that there is today.
Right.
So, again, and then if you have a larger than an acre, we do have, it goes up a little bit in size.
Right. And just so other board members understand why this is coming about, is the house is the wrong orientation for solar panels on the roof, so you have to do an array off-the-ground mounted posts, so that was a timely question for that homeowner to ask me. Okay. No further questions. At this time, I open the public hearing. Do we have anybody signed up? Okay. In hearing none, seeing none, I close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to approve the second reading?
I make a motion that we approve item F1.
Good, that's good. Second, do I have a second? Thank you. I'm being short with those. I'm being short with those motions. I understand that. Some of it's a little redundant, but I know we got to say it. Any discussion on the motion?
If I could just make one quick comment. I wanted to just compliment you and staff on the designation of classes for towers. I thought that was really a great way to handle that scenario. And, you know, if we would have seen what needed to be done years ago, we could have been a little more proactive about it. But the last five, 10 years or so, we've really seen the need. So appreciate you thinking outside of the box on that one. That was really good. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Hooker.
Yes.
Mr. North.
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Radford.
Yes. Thank you. We move to Item G, appointments. Do any board members have an appointment that has not been given to the clerk and included in the board report for Agenda Item G? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the list of appointments set forth in the board report?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the list of appointments that are in our board report.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker.
Yes.
Mr. North.
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Radford.
Yes. We move to Item H, consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by one resolution in the form or forms listed below. If the discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does any board member wish to move any items from the consent agenda for discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think we ought to move, remove Item Number 5 from the consent agenda. This is a big deal.
Just so we can talk about it.
Okay.
Mr. North doesn't want to. That's okay. We can leave it on consent.
All right.
Since the gentleman, Terry Spring, has made the motion, I'd more object to it if he wants to. But the VRFA hasn't met yet.
That's true. We should wait until they meet. Good point.